Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's School Board Candidate Forum on Special Education. We are so glad that you could all join us, and I'm sure we'll have people trickling in throughout the evening. My name is Lori Sked, and I am both a member of the CSE Executive Board and your moderator for tonight. Before we begin, I'd like to share a few important notes about the format of this event. The questions that will be asked tonight were submitted in advance by members of our special education community. Representatives from the CSE Executive Board reviewed the submissions, selected a representative set of questions, and in some cases, combined similar ones. While we did our best to capture the themes and concerns raised, not every question could be included in tonight's forum. A few days ago, these questions were shared with all of the candidates to help them prepare thoughtful responses. Because of time limitations, we will not be able to take new or follow-up questions throughout the chat this evening. We appreciate everyone's understanding about that. In terms of format, each question will be asked to all of the candidates so that each has the opportunity to introduce their perspective and provide a response to the question in turn. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the post-question, and we will use a timer to monitor adherence to the time limits. Please note, tonight's session is being recorded, so you may see that above your screen, it's being recorded. Finally, we want to emphasize that the focus of the forum is specifically on issues related to special education and the related support services that are so vital for our students, families, and schools. With that, we thank all of our candidates for being here, and we look forward to beginning the discussion. So I'm going to ask everybody the same questions, we're going to rotate through everybody, and as I said, there'll be a timer that'll come up, everyone has two minutes, there's going to be a little beep, and that's kind of your, "Two minutes are up," and we hope that you'll adhere to that, so everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. Okay. Carrie, the first question is going to you. See you smiling.
I knew it.
What's your familiarity with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act? And Section 504? This is a couple, a couple-part question.
In two minutes total, okay, great, well, hi. Hi, everyone, not an easy topic for two minutes, but let's dive into it, everyone, I'm Curry Sotner. Um, I am right now the president of the school board, um, uh, but my experience with IDEA, the American with Disabilities Act, IDEA and 504 is really how I group them together as a whole. So how we truly understand how we support and ensure that inclusion and belonging happens in all aspects of our area, of our lives, of our schools, and our community. So my background is in education, I have an elementary ed education, so my first experience with IDEA, which will be responsible for our IDPs, and then our 504s, which are another tool used to ensure that our kids get everything they need within schools, came through that foundational understanding. My second experience with that was having a child with disabilities, who was needed in IEP, but so many of the tools that he needed in his school system were not just to access education in a fair and appropriate way, but also ensure that his medical needs were met throughout his lifetime, and he still continues that today. So my work today really looks at how I understand it both as an educator, how I understand it as a parent, and how I understand it as a school board leader. And this work is really important, it's the work that we do every single day to make sure our kids have access not just to high-quality education, but access to the opportunities that they all deserve in life. Opportunities and high expectations for every single child. And that is interwoven in the belief of the ADA and through the work of the IDEA and 504, that our kids are a part of our community, a valuable and strong resource to our community. And how do we ensure that that works? And how do we advocate as parents to ensure that it's being met? How do we advocate through policy on the school board? And how do we advocate as educators to ensure that we're creating a community of belonging? I feel like my time is going to be up really soon, so I'd like to wrap it up. But I think this is really important, and I think it's very hard for people to deal with this because it's constitutional and emotional. Now, I love your ending, though. Thanks for being the guinea pig here.
We appreciate that, thank you. Jennifer, the next one's to you, and if you want to hear the whole question, it's a little bit longer. Um, but I think, Carrie, you touched on a lot of the other parts of it. Um, what is your familiarity with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act? Um, and Section 504? What part of your campaign platform focuses on special education? And what do you view as the role of the school board in advocating for students receiving special education services? Oh, unmute yourself.
I'm the one normally calling people out in meetings to unmute yourself. I hope, okay, well, good evening, all, my name is Jennifer Rivera, for those who don't know me, and thank you for having us this evening. I just want to start off, um, explaining my love for special education, comes from my mom, who has been a special education teacher for, ugh, maybe thirty-plus years. Um, I have been blessed to be a part of her children's lives, her students' lives, have seen them grow up, come to our house for playdates, pool time, and everything. So that's where my love for special education really comes from. And then being able to learn more about the IDEA, IEPs, and everything through my role at the Chester County Intermediate Unit. I am, was in charge of working HR and was hiring for a lot of our buildings and programs. And when I got to escape the HR building, I had an opportunity to volunteer on different sites and help, um, learn more about what our aides and teachers do in the services the CCIU provides to Chester County School District. But, um, that just explains my familiarity with, uh, I- IDEA and IEPs, and understanding the difference, how IEP is legally binding, making sure students, um, who fall under the thirteen categories of disabilities have the access to the resources that they need, such as speech therapy, um, occupational therapy versus the 504 plan, which provides services for students who might not fall under the IDEA but will need additional services in their classroom accommodations, longer test times, uh, you know, certain seating. So, um, thanks to a great community, CSE, attending committee meetings, I have been able to become more familiar, because I have to say, this has not been a strength of mine, but I've been able to become more familiar with IEDA and IEP. As a slate, I know my partners on here, Juanita and, oh dang, it was that quick?
It's quick.
Oh, my word, well, my slate mates will get into what our, um, slate is about.
Okay.
So I'm trusting you, Anna and Juanita.
Um, Talia, I don't see your face on here, if you are here, oh, okay, there you are.
Hello, we're all together.
Okay, great, perfect. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
So my name is Talia Nasim, just a little bit about myself, I'm a mom of three boys in the district. They're all at, um, tour at Penn Valley, one just started at Welsh. So I've been following the district very closely. I'm a member of the ISC, and I work on my children's cultural proficiency team at Penn Valley. Um, I am very familiar with IDEA. Having two children with an IEP made it a priority for myself to educate me with the IEPs and the 504s, since this is what protects them in the school district. It is also extremely helpful for me to understand my rights as a parent. Our campaign focuses on truly serving all students and families, including special education community. They should not have to fight to get supports they need and are legally entitled to. Unfortunately, we are seeing way too much of this with our current legal counsel for LMSD. We want to see more parent engagement and to make sure resources are distributed distributed equitably across all schools in the district. I think the role of the board is to hold the district accountable for making sure policy aligns with law, that staffing resources meet student needs, and that data on students' progress is transparent. The board must also advocate by listening to families and their experiences, making sure their voices help shape decisions. Special education is not an afterthought, but an integral part of our district's mission to educate every child. I aim to bridge gaps between families and the administration. Thanks.
Good job getting in your time, okay. Um, Omar, next question's to you.
Awesome. Since you're.
Not next question, same question.
Same question.
Hi, everyone, uh, for those who don't know me, my name is Omar Deko. I'm, my day job, I'm Director of AI Engineering, so I handle data and AI and all the cool stuff you can think of on a daily basis. On a personal note, I am a father of three amazing children, at fourteen, at twelve, and eleven years old now, had a birthday last week. Two of them are GEIP. And, uh, we've gone through the process in Laura Maron with them, and on top of that, I, when I was much, 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 much younger, without disclosing the age, also was diagnosed with learning disabilities. I had an amazing mother who was an amazing advocate, who helped me navigate through that and fight with the school the time to allow for the special accommodations to help me thrive. I was the first IB student to get special accommodation to use a laptop, without disclosing again my age. So, uh, where I see, uh, the, 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 where the board comes into play with all these things, you have to understand all the regulations, all the compliance, but you also have to be the, you have to be the board that holds the administration accountable. What I mean by that, it's very easy to do things when everything works, but you have to be much, much stronger, much more fair when things don't go that great. Uh, special education has a lot of emotion to it as well. Every person comes in, uh, uh, with their own personal, uh, things, and we have to help them navigate through that.
Thank you. Um, Juanita? Your turn, and I'm happy to repeat the question if anybody needs me to.
Hello, I'm Juanita Kerber. And this holds a special place for me, and like Jennifer, I am very much committed to learning more. I have a child that's in middle school, but, uh, most importantly, I had a nephew who was all, both autistic, and he had lupus. So, just seeing the experience that my sister went through with trying to get the help that he needed, and by the way, this was in the Philadelphia School District, um, impacted me a lot, especially after, um, he passed away last December. And so what I wanted to do is to make sure that I was purposeful and tried to do something in his legacy. And so this, this means a lot to me. I think it's so important to be able to connect the community with the proper resources for their children. Understanding what the differences are between the Disabilities Education Act and Section 504, it varies. The IDEA is very specific and has the appropriate evaluations that is specified for the, the child. And it's a long process that sometimes many chi- um, parents become, and families become frustrated with, understandably, but we want to ensure that all of the evaluations meet the desire for that child's goals. And as a board, it is so important that we make sure that we're inclusive and that we're building belonging for children in special education. It also is so important for other kids to be able to see and accept differences from different types of children. So an inclusive education helps to accomplish that.
I love the music. Um, Anna, you're next. Anna?
Yeah, sorry, I was getting off mute, so, hi, everyone, thanks for having us this evening and taking time out of your busy days to hear about what we are doing and are committed to. As a slate, we are committed to strengthening public education, which means advocating for policies that expand access, ensure fairness, and uphold our highest standards for our students. This starts by anchoring our vision for what we will do for our schools in Policy 101, which is the Vision of Values for our district that explicitly states that our special education students and students across the district are having the experience that most meets their individualized needs and all supports are provided. Secondarily, as a slate, we are focused on enhancing equity and inclusion, specifically outlined in Policy 101. Um, some of my colleagues that just spoke on the Republican slate talked about their support of equity inclusion. However, when you are endorsed specifically by organizations with stated beliefs to take away the rights of our students, that's something we really have to consider in the nuance of the language and what we are talking about. And so as we think of what this means on a day-to-day of how our slate will continue to advocate in our role as school board members, it means holding administration accountable to the policies that specifically support our special education students and families, listening to our families when they are saying they are not having a positive experience, and changing the practice of how we expect the administration to work with our parents and families. We have work to do in this, this is ongoing work that we've been, um, partnering with the CSE specifically as the concrete advocacy organization that's written into our bylaws to serve as the partner to our administration, to the board, and most importantly, for our students to get the experience that they deserve. And most recently, I think we demonstrated how we do this collaboratively when we were, um, working on Policy 236 and had CSE at the table with administration to bolster the outcomes for our students. Thank you.
Dina?
Hi, everybody, uh, for those who don't know me, I'm Dina Pack, and I'm one of the dreaded Republicans. Um, I am a mother of two children with IEPs and one with a GIEP, two of my children have 504s. I'm also a medical professional, I run a very large pediatric home health company in the area, and I have devoted my professional life to children with intellectual disabilities and chronic health needs. I specifically help children that have comorbidities, um, and, uh, a technology dependence that they have to go to school with, autism spectrum disorders, intellectual disabilities, and all manner of, uh, special education needs. So in both my personal and professional life, I spend an enormous amount of time working specifically with IDEA, uh, 504s and implementation. I'm also an advocate for my families that I work with to help support them through that process, as I find that most families that have a child with special education needs or some disabilities are run off their feet, they're overwhelmed, and they really need the support of someone who can help them navigate the system. I'm also a fierce advocate for these children in my personal life. I have gone up to Harrisburg numerous times to advocate for more supports for the special education community. So I take issue saying that Republicans can't support special education. This is my goal and my purpose in life, is these children, and I am very devoted to them. I think it is the board's job to obviously implement policy, but then hold adherence to policy. I think we should be asking for more frequent reporting and making sure that equity and inclusion is actually happening for these kids. I have lots of children that I care for and that I've, um, helped families with advocacy for that have been left out of, uh, certain, you know, maybe after-school activities or in-class activities that were maybe planned by a class parent who's unfamiliar with how to be inclusive to children that have a difference in need. And so I really feel that it is the board's job from a top-down level to set policy expectation, set expectation for transparency, and then go top-down from there.
Good. And Jacob?
Hi, everybody, I'm Jacob Rudolph, and I am the eighteen-year-old who's running, and I'm also registered independent. So first off, the issue that initially drew me into this race was the treatment I received from the district, or rather, the lack thereof. And while I wasn't familiar with IDEA and had only heard of 504s at the time, throughout my dealings with the district, I became very familiar with both of these. In fact, I had to fight the district for nearly three years to get them to provide me with my special education services, and they only did so after my family sued them multiple times. This approach is not only stressful and challenging for families to navigate, but also expensive for the district. We should initiate structural change by replacing our current Director of Student Services and Special Education. And we also need to establish a rapid-response team to prevent bottlenecks and develop a legal strategy that prioritizes mediation over litigation. In fact, I estimate that our current legal strategy incurs approximately $5 million a year in annual expenses. In terms of the board's role, it must advocate for students who receive special education services. They need to take a critical look at the upper administration and ask themselves if people in charge of departments have the students' best interests at heart. They also need to create new policies or revise existing ones to ensure that students receive the support they need when they need it, without having to go through a lengthy appeals process with the district. My ultimate goal is to ensure that every child, regardless of their abilities, has access to the education and support they deserve. The current situation, where families must fight for years or go to court to obtain basic services, is unacceptable. If elected, I will strive to create a system that is proactive, compassionate, and efficient. A system where our students can focus on learning, not on bureaucracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for the next question, what does low dance break, what does an inclusive school environment mean to you? And how would you ensure students with disabilities in the school district are fully supported in general education settings? And Jennifer, you're up first.
Sorry, I was just, I'm, I'm muting myself. Um, to me, an inclusive school environment means creating a culture where every student, regardless of their ability, feels valued, they feel supported, and able to full, fully participate in both academic and social aspects of school life. It's about making sure students with disabilities are not placed on the margins of things, but are empowered to thrive alongside their peers in general education settings. To ensure our district, um, would focus, um, I would focus on these three areas. Collaboration and training. Ongoing professional development, especially when it comes to implementing new policies. Just at the past, um, board meeting, we, um, discussed how Policy 236 regarding positive behavior support was approved. Now, our community is asking, now what, what's next? So making sure we have that implementation plan in place, the training in place for her staff, especially when it comes to rolling out new pro- uh, policies. Um, second, access and accommodation. Students with disabilities need individual support built into the classrooms. So being mindful and keeping in mind our classrooms and space in, spaces with thoughtful design that proactively anticipates diverse needs and not us being reactive. And then last, belonging with high expectations. Inclusion is not just about physical presence, it's meaningful participation. That means promoting peer relationship and celebrating different learning strengths. And I believe with all of this, we will be able to help all of our students thrive and set them up for success.
Thank you. Omar, next, next to you.
Not anymore. So, I agree with most of the things Jennifer said, and I think this goes universally to, hopefully, all of us here on this call. Um, inclusion means that every student belongs and can succeed. It has to be a mindset of how we do this, not just a regulation or policy that we have to adhere to. I would like us to be able to do this, to introduce more models, to see how we can do, be more inclusive, co-teaching, expanding assistive technology, and media, many other things as well. I think, uh, like Jen said, and I totally agree with her, and there's not much to say about this. This has to be a culture that we adopt and create and continuously evolve to have inclusive as a mindset that introduces everyone with all their special needs into the, with everyone else as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
You're there. Similar to what Omar said, I, I hope and think that all of us on the slate want a great experience for students. And so when we think about inclusion, having a school environment where our students feel supported and that our teachers know the individual needs of our students and are able to meet those needs and/or when that is not happening, be able to engage in a conversation with parents, with caregivers, with guardians, in order to facilitate that, is really important. I think that in my own experience with my two children, um, that, um, both have IEPs in the school district, the times that they have experienced inclusion the most is when they are able to be with their general education peers as much as possible, and that also they are getting the sports, supports they need in order to excel. And so while I know that, um, my experience may not be the same as many other parents in the district, because I think that's what we also have to consider when we talk about inclusion and parental experience. Each of us here on the call, depending on our experience, depending on the unique needs of our students, might really have different experiences with the school district, but be willing to engage in that conversation and push on the different resources that are available when that's, those needs are not being met. But at the very, um, basic of levels, I want each of our students to be able to have the experience to get what they need and to be able to be successful and feel as if they belong at school at the very basic level of inclusion. Thank you.
Juanita?
An inclusive school environment, uh, means to me, and I can give you a great example. Um, upon back-to-school night, it was, you know, pretty crazy as parents going through the school day that their kids go through. And one of the student peers who led me around was a student, um, with special abilities. And that, what I really loved was the fact that he felt comfortable and comfortable also in telling me there were certain things that he didn't, wasn't quite sure where to go or where to lead me, he was very polite, very accommodating. And I thought this was an excellent way that the school helped to make him inclusive in that part of that evening. And it turns out that he's also a friend of my, my son's, and my son said that he, he's a great person. But you can tell that the influence and the inclusivity of the school is helpful and is helpful for the morale of the student and is helpful for the families to know that their child is being made a part of the process and a part of the family. I believe that also inclusion works best when the entire team, CSE, the administrators, the board, and families in their community are all helping to ensure that LMSD is equipped and that is very supportive of the needs of what we need to have in place, so that our children thrive. Um, as a board member, I know that the responsibility would be to uphold this, and I will agree with everyone. I, and as you, as Omar said, no one would disagree with this, but an inclusive environment is what will help our children, um, thrive the most. I know I just repeated myself, but let me leave that on that note.
Um, Talia?
So we need to foster an inclusive school environment regardless of ability. Every student should feel and needs to feel like they belong. They must all have meaningful access to learning and be a valued member of the classroom community. Inclusion is about ensuring students with disabilities are given the right supports so they can succeed academically, socially, and emotionally alongside their peers. We must provide the right resources, build a culture of collaboration, use individuali- individual supports, and foster belonging. As a board member, you have to ask the right questions, review data, and listen to families about what is working and what is not. We must create an environment that embraces every child. Thank you.
Jacob?
Hi, everybody, so an inclusive school environment to me means that all students are supported regardless of their abilities. But right now, that isn't happening, and I know this firsthand because the district spent years denying me the services to which I was entitled. I had to fight just to be supported, and that experience made me realize how broken the system is. No student should ever be denied their legally owed services or the opportunity to reach their full potential. To rectify this, we must ensure that supports are provided early and consistently. This strategy involves investing in teacher training to ensure that they are equipped to support all learners, regardless of ability, and establishing rapid-response systems at the building level to address gaps as soon as the, they arise. We should also invest in co-teaching models for those who need it, so students with disabilities can learn alongside their peers, which would build a sense of inclusivity and mutual learning. And when inclusion is prioritized, everyone benefits. Students with disabilities gain access to the opportunities they deserve, and their peers learn empathy, patience, and the importance of collaboration. An inclusive classroom mirrors the real world and prepares all students for it. If elected, I will dedicate my efforts to building a system that supports every student from the beginning. This will allow them to focus their energy on learning rather than struggling to be included or obtain their supports. Thank you.
Dina?
Um, so I think
So, I think inclusion really looks different for every child, and it's something we have to keep in our, in our framework as well, is that we have to really leave room for what every individual child needs. A great analogy, I heard somebody say recently is, you know, you, you throw twelve pieces of spaghetti at the wall and you see what sticks. And, and not every child is going to have the same support stick for them, and that's really, I think, why inclusion needs to be a little bit more broad. I can give you a really great story. My daughter recently was at a camp trip. And the camp had her hike down about a mile and a half into a cave. And at the end of the cave was a light show, and the person who had arranged this light show was not thinking about non-neurodiverse children at the time, and it didn't occur to her that there might be a problem with the light show. My daughter has epilepsy, so she gets down a mile and a half into the cave. And then the man who's doing the light show says, anyone who has epilepsy, you know, the warning, you can't be at the light show. And so my daughter unfortunately has to hike back up a mile and a half, and her friends are at the light show, and she's by herself. That's textbook-like accidental exclusion, right? The parent that planned this trip did not intend to exclude my daughter, but she just wasn't really thinking about the needs of everyone when planning the trip. So I really feel like that's a great recipe for how we should think about inclusion. Is, is, you know, okay, we're gonna do a school play in fourth grade. How about my kid with apraxia who uses a communication board? How are they getting involved in the school play? There needs to be a space and a thought for everyone, and it might look different for every child, but that's really for me the definition of inclusion. I have a lot of experience with helping kids with devices, access different environments that they might not always be able to access in a traditional sense. How can we help the child in the wheelchair? I have a lot of kids with assistive devices, you know, get involved in the school dance, or I had a kid who's a runner. Wanted to be a runner and had some assistive technology. How can we make that happen? That for me is really what inclusion's about.
So just want to take a quick pause and send a reminder that all questions have been submitted in advance. So, anything that's in the chat is not going to be submitted currently. And as a reminder as well, this is being recorded, and the transcript and recording will be sent after this meeting. Thank you. Okay. Carrie? To you.
Hi. It's a, it's a really good question. I have actually been really fascinated to go last on this one, to give myself a minute to think, but also to hear everybody's comments. And I, I think it's really fascinating when we think about inclusion. But then we still use words like regardless of ability. And I want to check ourselves there and say that this isn't special needs, this is just human needs. What do we need to do to ensure that every child in our school gets what they need? So they can follow the law, because as a board member, I need to make sure that the law is being followed. And that means the least restrictive environment, that means a fair and appropriate education. And so, yes, it is so emotional to be a parent with an IEP with the significant needs of your child. And that is something you need as a board member to be able to hear. But at the same time, you need to know how you match up the law with the needs of that child in every single classroom. And so when I think about inclusion and what it means to me in a good classroom when doing it well, is inclusion's the role of every single person in classroom. It is not a weight on the special ed teacher alone or on the general ed teacher alone. That is a team system with that student first. Our children are people with a voice and agency all of their own, and we center them in these conversations. What do they believe that they need most? What do their parents believe? But then we need to unpack that word, school environment. It's not just the classroom, it's the lunchroom. It's going to camp, that was a great example. It is doing the sports. It's being at their home school, because you know what matters when you get off the bus in first grade? That you walk back to your, your home, your apartment, your friend's house, and that kid is right next door. Because that's where true inclusion happens at every step of the way. That takes a mindset and a vision to follow the law and really believe in true least restrictive environment and a fair and appropriate education that every child gains knowledge.
Thank you. Okay, question three. What do you see as the board's role in supporting parent or caregiver participation and engagement in the special education process? And how could policies be enhanced to support this goal? Anna, you're up first.
Thanks, Lori. You know, really, the, how I see the board's role in supporting parent and caregiver participation is we are in the role of governance. So, our first role is holding the administration accountable to working with parents and working with teachers, working with all of our school community members who might have a challenge and/or a great experience they want to build on in terms of engaging in that process. That distinction is really important and one that I think that we as school board members and prospective school board members really need to consider as we're thinking of what agency we actually have as school board members. And so that accountability piece is huge. And also, in looking at our policies, I actually think that the, where there is more opportunity for us to make immediate change is in the administrative regulations, which dictate and outline the specific actions that the administration is to take in order to make sure that the true intent of the policy is realized. And so, how I believe that these administrative regulations could be enhanced is honestly, starting with getting more specific feedback from the CSE and from parents about which policies they believe are not being fully lived into the intention of the policy and where there might be room and have those policies reviewed, connected to the ARs to work with administration. I think a really key piece is working with Dr. Rennelli to get his perspective and remembering he's just come on board, not as an excuse for slowing down the process, but also just being realistic that we've had four superintendents in five years, which makes it really difficult for anyone to have a continuous positive experience for their students if they are having challenges because of those structural changes and difficulties to navigate.
Thank you. Talia?
Thank you. Our students will have the best supports for them when parents and caregivers are true partners. They know their children best, and their voices are so important to shaping meaningful goals and supports. The board must make sure the district creates structures where families are informed, heard, and respected. Transparency is vital. Policy can enhance this by creating regular opportunities for parents and caregivers to share their experiences directly with the board or to the district leaders using the feedback guide, feedback to guide improvements. Ongoing training for staff on family engagement is of the utmost importance. While our district does have policies surrounding this question, there are many ways to enhance it. We should have a school-wide survey for families to share experiences and identify gaps in service. Require the administration to present the survey results publicly and outline steps for improvement. We should also consider appointing a special education family advocate to guide families through this process and help resolve concerns early. I would also love to see each of the school's special education team hold a bi-annual parent forum where parents can come and discuss concerns and successes. Thank you.
And Omar, right to you.
Yeah. So, I think all of us know as parents that our children's lives and us as parents, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. And when we identify bumps in the road, it becomes even that much more complex and stressful when there's a process that we're intended to follow and we not necessarily know what we need to do, or what is the right thing to do for our child at that moment. I think what we need to do is acknowledge that as a board and help the parents navigate through that by setting a clear tone that parents are equal partners. I'll push for transparent information, a user-friendly special education dashboard, plain language timelines and contracts, and publish an aggregated outcomes data to build trust. I'll formalize a feedback loop, whether it's a quick post-surveys or post-IEP meetings and things like that. Expand recorded webinars and multilingual support and hold an annual special education town hall to develop and engage the parents in a communication, not necessarily just through formal meetings, but actually have a conversation to discuss the processes, what works well, what doesn't, aggregate that and learn for that moving forward. I think that engagement must be measured and improved like any other outcome that we have. Thank you.
Juanita?
So, there is a group, a community group.
What's her name?
Pardon me?
Honorator, you gotta mute.
Okay. Is my time up yet? But there is a community group, community conversations, which this topic is an important group that meets. Let, let me rephrase this. So, in community communications, we cover multiple topics that's important for all the children in our district. And special education is one of them. And it is also a partnership with members from CSE. And a couple of members were there recently, which I attended the meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we talked about the partnership and we talked about the collaboration and how important it is for families and to get the support that they need. So, this was an opportunity for families or parents and guardians to meet with others with input and also to be a part of the process of putting together a survey. And so, what I enjoy about this is that we have members of the community who are former teachers, educators, some past and some current, who all participate. And this will help aid with the engagement. And one of the things that I saw the most with how, was how often parents feel as though there are so many things that they need to address or so many processes to have to fill out that they feel overwhelmed. So this community group along with the engagement of CSE helps.
Carrie?
Yeah, I was hoping I'd go right after Renita. I think community groups are such a powerful thing. So when we think about your question, and just let me reframe it to make sure I have it right, is what's the parent and caregiver participation and support in special education process? This is extremely hard. It's scary. You know, I got into special education with my child, having a master's degree in elementary ed, an undergrad in biology and medical sciences, and an entire love of the Constitution, and I was scared to death. It was really hard. It was really difficult. And so what we can do as a board and what we can do as a community are both really important. So I think it's very important that we empower our, our parents and our caregivers, but it's also about the resources we have in the broader community. So our school, of course, is going to do the policy, is the board is policy, resources, budget, curriculum, training, asking the right questions, knowing what to ask and how to unravel that curriculum at that board table is so unbelievably important. Because when you know what to ask, you can start to really tease out, is it just what you're doing and how the policy is written? Or how does it work in the day-to-day process? Looking at our data, which we look at multiple times a year on what is the level of inclusion in our school systems, what is the number and impact on our budget of cases on special education, all really matter and happen at the table. But not all parents can go to these meetings, and community advocates are so important, like the group Juanita was just talking about, but other groups as well. Organizations out of the state, the MCIU, like PTAN, is a powerful tool to have at the table. So my job as a board member and as a neighbor and as a parent is to be an open resource to listen and connect dots. And some of the strongest dots that I can connect are back to the school systems and our new superintendent. He is new. Guess what? We picked a special education person on purpose because it matters.
Jacob?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree, parent and guardian participation in the special education process is essential. In, in fact, one of the most significant issues I have with the current IEP process is that the school presents parents with predetermined outcomes to either rubber stamp or contest, which often leads to litigation. Instead, we should encourage IEP teams to collaborate with families to develop strategies that work best for their children. As someone who has navigated this process, I understand the frustration of feeling like your voice doesn't matter. It happened to my parents. I firmly believe that families should be treated as equal partners, not outsiders. To achieve this, the district needs to embed transparency to every stage of the IEP process, from clear proactive communication before meetings to providing families with the resources and guidance they need to advocate effectively for their children. The board can enhance policies by mandating earlier engagement with families, ensuring that IEP teams come to the table prepared with flexible options rather than fixed decisions, and holding administrators accountable for fostering a culture of partnership. Parents understand their children far better than any administrator. And when their input is valued, students are far more likely to succeed. Look, ultimately, building, engaging families, sorry, is crucial to providing effective support to students. If elected, I'll work to build a system where family input is valued at every step of the process. Because when parents are involved, students succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dina?
Sorry, a little technical malformation there. So I echo what, you know, many of my colleagues here have said and other candidates. Parent advocacy and parent involvement in their child's future and in their child's planning is to me, as a, as a clinician, the most important feedback that you need to get. And I think as a board that needs, you know, we would hope that the school board looks at parents' involvement not as adversarial or as combative, but as really a partnership in the support of that student. Because as Jacob said, the parent does know their child best, and sometimes they might have intuition in a support that might work or, you know, a theory of why a behavior is happening that we could help with a positive behavioral support and, and a positive implementation of a support, you know, adjust that behavior, but you're only going to get that if you really have a good collaborative environment for the parent to feel open and feel like they can collaborate with the team and that they're part of the process. When I create plans of care for the kids that I care for, I sit with the family and I say, what are the goals that you have? What are you looking for from this experience? I want to teach my child XYZ thing, and that it's my job for my staff to implement with the parent sees as their goal too. I have goals obviously as a clinician, right? I have metrics that I have to meet and mandates and medical care plans that I need to fulfill, but I also want to always center the family and their goal for their, their child. And as a board member, I would want that to be the way that I approach the community in general. Because if the family feels engaged in this process and feels like their voice is heard and they can participate, they might be more willing to, to accept some of the, the ideas that the IEP team and the teachers that are in the classroom that are excellent at what they do are offering. You know, if, if the teacher really is collaborative with the family and, and the family feels that, they might say, you know what, your suggestion's good, let's try it.
Good. And Jennifer?
Okay, I'm going to sum it up. My, um, slate mates have done a great job here. In short, the board's role, I believe, is to create the conditions of authenticity, collaboration, and by ensuring policies focus on accessibility, transparency, and ongoing dialogue. And with this, I hope the result would be stronger partnerships with the students' parents and caregivers that will ultimately lead to better outcomes for students. But to enhance these policies, I believe that the district should really consider or continue to do, because I'm still learning all of this, is setting benchmarks for family engagement, such as parent participation in IEP meetings, reviewing IEPs annually, providing ongoing workshops and peer-to-peer networks, and encouraging feedback loops to create structured opportunities for parents and caregivers to give feedback. But most importantly, I was thinking about, it is so important that our staff in our school district is trained on family engagement. The best practices on how to engage with caregivers and parents when it comes to cultural competence so that every parent of our students feel welcomed and feel heard and feel respected. And I think that's so important, training our staff on how to engage with our families and caregivers.
Thank you. Okay, next. What policies would you support? What policies would you support to encourage a more welcoming and less adversarial relationship between special education stakeholders in order to provide the best possible education for students in LMSD? Juanita, you're up first this time.
Um, you know, the first thing I thought about was, um, holistic methods. And the key to, um, understanding holistic practices is that the first practice is to listen. Listening helps not only the caregivers and parents, but also if we have highly trained staff who are enthusiastic about what they're doing and using that holistic approach, then the first thing that they're going to do is to consider a lot of the parents' input. Um, I think the, the research that was done by an outside evaluator, um, talked about the importance of empowering our school-based and family-based teams to work together. And again, this, this, this speaks to the importance, how we have to have the interconnection and make sure that we're all on the same page for what works best for the child. And not only that, um, as we note the progress of the child and the processes, we should always have room for improvement. We should, should always be looking for ways to continue to motivate that child and make sure that they're getting all the proper, um, services. Again, the collaboration that we need is to make sure that parents feel welcome and feel comfortable and confident to be able to be a part of the process and not feel as though their input is not taken into consideration and not feels though they don't know all the things to ask. There are also family advocates who can go and he- help that parent address some of those issues where they may not feel comfortable.
Jennifer.
I'm sorry, I was just coughing. Give me a second, I just got back from a trip. Um, the follow-up from what Juanita was sharing, um, I've believed too, it starts with listening, um, because there's always room for improvement. Um, so listening first is key, but I believe the best outcomes for our students is when parents, teachers, and administration, administrators are working together as partners and not adversaries to create that kind of culture in Lower Marion School District. Um, I would love to support policies that make communication more open, consistent, and respectful. Um, families should never feel like they're in the dark about their child's education. So I would push for clear and proactive updates, especially when it comes to a child's education. Um, and then also, I mean, I just think it's important for ongoing staff training, like I shared earlier, um, especially when it comes to how to engage with families and partners to create that trust. And at every step, we have to keep the student in the center of that discussion, being mi- reminding ourselves that their growth, their independence, and their success is what really matters. And then also, um, focusing on how we can encourage structured opportunities, how we could be proactive and work with parents and educators, um, early, um, before an issue escalates. I think that's so important too. So having a trained facilitator, uh, liaisons help with that is so important as well.
Thank you. Jacob.
So part of the current adversarial nature between special education stakeholders and the district is due to the district's legal strategy. Um, our lawyers, Whistler Pearlstein, have been sucking about a million dollars a year from the district, and that is because they're currently charging around the clock due to all of the special education lawsuits that are happening. Instead of defaulting to litigation, we should adopt a strategy that prioritizes mediation and collaboration. Families in the district should work together to solve problems quickly rather than fighting each other for years and involving the courts. I would also support policies that require earlier intervention when disputes arise, allowing us to address issues before they escalate and become more complex. In addition, the board should advocate for a cultural shift within the administration, one that emphasizes listening to families, building trust and treating parents as partners rather than adversaries. Transparency and decision-making, timely communication, and a commitment to resolving concerns at the lowest level possible would go a long way towards restoring confidence. Ultimately, the goal should be straightforward to redirect time, energy, and resources away from lawsuits and back to supporting students. I will fight to replace an adversarial system with one built on trust, collaboration, and accountability on the district's behalf, because our students deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie.
Okay. Uh, trying to figure out how to answer this one in a, a way that helps kind of frame the conversation. Now, I, I want to start by saying that a lot of educational law in Pennsylvania and across this country is already monitored with time, date, expectation. So this is something that I think is really important for not just possible school board members, but the community to know. I know a lot of our special ed parents know some of these datas in the dynamite. There is a timeline to all these things. It's actually all litigated by the law on a state level that goes through. What I think is really important, and yeah, we can always strengthen policies. And I think I had to just give kudos to Anna by bringing CSE to the table and having them not just as people visiting the table, but by leaders helping to write the policy. We were able to advocate for a more inclusive policy that really spoke to different people's needs, because all their kids have different needs as well. But what I think is really important is to ensure that we are doing appropriate ways to build relationships between the school district, the state, the federal law, and the parents. I already said it's scary and I knew what I was doing when I walked in there, but so much of this stuff is a process that you follow, is a timeline that you follow. And this really can work through training where parents and community members move that forward. The Montgomery County Intermediate, Montgomery County Down Syndrome Interest Group is one of the best groups I know in Montgomery County that is doing this work. How do we bring them to the table? How do we say, maybe our policies that state our values are really strong, but it's how we implement them? And I'd like to hearken back really quickly to four years ago, when there was a really powerful evaluation study done. I would suggest everybody watch that evaluation study. What it said was the homeschool teachers, the special ed teachers, and the parents are the strongest unit and can solve this without any need for escalation. Let's go back there.
Talia.
I believe in working as a team when it comes to supporting students. Parents should never feel like they have to fight for services. I would support policy that encourages transparency and communication, protects family engagement, gives structured feedback loops, early resolution, mediation, and inclusion. The goal is to shift from a culture of compliance to one of partnership, respect, and shared responsibility. Some ways to put this into effect would be to standardize how families are updated on student progress with easy read summaries to be presented along with the formal reports, expand training for staff on effective parent partnerships, cultural humility, and conflict resolution. Develop a policy that encourages early problem solving, meeting that, meetings that promote inclusive practices in all aspects of school and ensure professional development that emphasizes inclusion for all educators, not just special education staff. Thank you.
And Dina.
Um, so special ed parents and child, uh, parents with children with disabilities, when they're looking through or getting to the IEP process, are often already overwhelmed, have already been experiencing either significant need in terms of academics, fights getting shoes on to get to the door. Um, you know, really, it can come with from, from a whole family level. It can come with so much pain and stress and overwhelm, um, that when we get to the IEP meeting, a family might already kind of be out on, on how much to fight and what questions to ask. So I think one of the best things that we can do right off the bat is, um, at every IEP meeting or at every newly identified child, offer them the CSE guidebook, which I only just found out about a few weeks ago, and I think is fantastic. I didn't know it existed before a few weeks ago, and I actually talked to some of my friends who also have special education children in the district, and they didn't know it existed. And it's such a resource for families to at least have a starting place to say, here we go, here's this list of information, here's the resources, here are your rights. I think that would be a really great place to start. Um, I, I like that Carrie mentioned the report that was done in 2021 by the West Ed Group that gave some really good ideas, like a special ed ombudsman, someone who's a out of the, the process mediator, someone that a family, when they're maybe trying to get through and can't get the resource that they're looking for, can talk to. And then that person can help bridge the gap with the school team so that we're eliminating some of this legal first, um, type of strategy. Um, I really think that that is harmful, the legal first, you know, this litigation strategy is really, really harmful, and it leads to a lot of mistrust with, with families. So I think that would be another really great place to start. Um, and I think that we have to think about the, as Jacob said, the nearly one million dollars just in billables that Whistler Pearlstein has billed this year. Uh, sixty-two percent of it was for special ed. That's a problem.
Thank you. And before you mute your team, you're up next.
So I think a lot of really great ideas and a lot of good things already be, are being done by the school district already, so I'm not going to mention them again. I think what we need to understand is and acknowledge that we have an issue of trust deficit. It's not just the board, it's not just the administration, it's not just the parents, it's all of us together. It's a, sometimes and many of the times, it's a very stressful environment to go through a special education, especially when it's your child, and we have to acknowledge that on all sides. Educators can feel defensive and overwhelmed, it can lead to breakdowns, miscommunications, and many, many things like that. The leadership should set the tone, and what I mean by that, we should be able to provide the teachers the tools for conflict resolution, for de-escalation, but also provide the material that the parents need at the right time, help them through the process, provide them materials in advance, provide them the advocacy that they need. All those things together can help through time, because it's a process to build trust. It's not overnight. It's something that we need to be able to do in order to amend that and be able to track the success of this, get the parents' feedback as well, and be able to continuously improve. Thank you.
Thank you. And to Anna.
Thanks. Um, so I think the first area that I would really focus on is working with the administration to understand and celebrate and learn from our school communities and special education relationships that are going really well. I know the focus of this question is encouraging a more welcoming and less adversarial relationship, and I can't speak to the individual interests or experience of the special education parents on this call, but anecdotally, I do know that there are many parents who have had a very positive experience, and I do know we have amazing special education educators within our district that do wonderful, wonderful work. And bringing it back to the West End report, that was also identified and that the majority of challenges can be solved at the school level and do not need to be escalated, and that there is not a stated strategy to have our first defense be escalation to the legal level. That's the worst-case situation, that a parent has no other recourse but to go through litigation, um, which I, I would imagine that we're all aligned on. And so at a very starting point, I would like to learn from our schools and spaces and, and through the superintendent. Our main goal in this is how do we hold the superintendent accountable to giving us the information that is needed to ensure that our policies are being implemented with fidelity and helping, um, like Dina said, to make sure we're working with CSE and the administration that parents have access to all of the resources, um, through other parents, through the administration, and through the school communities to best support their students.
Thank you. Okay. We saw a lot of board-level discussion about equity last year. What are your plans to ensure that students with disabilities are included and that we are creating a culture of belonging when making decisions about equity policies at LMSD? We're going to go back to the beginning and Carrie, you're kicking us off.
Thanks. So equity is for all kids. Um, it's for all people, and this is the, the most powerful tool we have to ensure inclusion is equity. And I think it is unbelievably important when we think through, how does this work? What are the ways to do this to really truly have belonging? Is how do you set up an entire ecosystem of equity in the schools, classrooms, in the playgrounds, and in the, the school and home community, after-school sports, clubs, all those pieces? And then equity just truly means, so we're all on the same page, giving you what you need to be successful, and then holding high expectations for every child. We can't forget that second part, because the what really truly is true inclusion is not just saying, we're going to welcome you in no matter what your ability. It is to truly saying, you're coming in and to sharing with us so much that you have to give and have to offer, and we have high expectations for us as a community. So the equity policy, when we talk through these equity policies, and they are interwoven, not just in the equity policy themselves, but in all the work that we do as we look through. How do we look at behavioral plans? How do we look at support? How do we look at structures? How do we ensure that every kid has access to sports when sports are sometimes not in their ability or not in their financial purview as well? So the work that we need to do as a board is to ensure, and again, I'm going back to, these are conversations that we're having as board members or maybe possibly future board members, to say, what will we do as a board member? I will work very strongly with my eight other board members and my superintendent, listening to the community, engaging in conversations, and looking at the data and comparing it to the budgets that we have, to how do we move these policies forward and then implement them into action? And that implementation into action is at every single level, but it's ten people doing it together, not one.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Um, when we talk about equity, um, it must, we must think about every student. It includes every student, and that absolutely means students with disabilities. Um, equity isn't just about access, it's about belonging. I would support policies that make sure students with disabilities are considered at every beginning of decision-making and not just an afterthought. That means including families and special education staff in equity conversations, ensuring that accessibility and inclusion are built into new programs, um, that we're tracking the da- data, like Carrie said, to make sure our students with disabilities are benefiting from those initiatives. But beyond the policy, our culture here at Lower Marion School District is what really matters. I want LMSD to be a place where students with disabilities are seen as full members of our community, whether that's in the classroom, in extracurricular activities, in school leadership opportunities. If we could truly commit to listening to these students and their families and design that within mind from the start, I believe that we could create a district where every child feels like they belong.
Thank you. Talia.
Thank you. We cannot leave disability out of the conversation of equity. If we want a true culture of belonging, then students with disabilities need to be a part of all equity work. For me, that means making sure families are heard from the beginning, looking honestly at our data to see where students might not be getting the support that is, is needed, and making sure our classrooms, activities, and extracurriculars are truly welcoming and spaces where every student feels like they belong. Equity isn't a one-size-fits-all. Every child deserves the chance to succeed. I'll keep pushing for us to include disability in equity decisions and policies we put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Omer, since you're right there.
Making life easy. So I agree with everyone, everyone. I think we're all aligned how important it is to ensure that equity discussions are always included, always include disability, embedding disability status in equity audits and dashboards, making sure we're looking at achievements, access to advanced coursework, discipline, graduation, participation. All those things are vitally important to be able to be tracked in order to see that these things are actually being done and we're able to see that they grow and succeed. We will expand the belonging initiatives, unified activities, inclusive clubs, access, accessible tech and facilities. And very important, and again, talking about the data, we need to- And very important, and again, talking about the data, we need to be able to measure the belonging, students' surveys to drive action.
Thank you. Juanita?
So thinking about equity, let's also think about the historical content of equity and what it means. Years ago, more than fifty years ago, um, people with special disabilities were not seen, they were hidden away. And we, not only that, but you can't talk about equity without also talking about diversity. So diversity, equity, inclusion, and building belonging, these are all um, policies that are put in place now because of what happened before. And what happened before was where that people were put aside, they were put in institutions, and it wasn't until the, um, it wasn't until that we demanded the rights for everyone that things started to change. And it really, it is so discouraging that equity has to be even a question, because this is a, a God-given right, uh, I'm sorry to say it that way, but it's just not a privilege, but it's a right, it's a right that everyone should have. So all of our children fall under that category, and we want to make sure that every child has the opportunity to achieve at the highest level and free from bias and lower expectations. And to trace back to what Curry said earlier, it's not about special needs, it's about human dignity. And that is what equity is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Thank you. Um, so when I think about the discussions that we had throughout last year and our plans to continue ensuring students with disabilities are included, and how are we creating that culture of belonging, building on what my colleagues, um, Curry, Jennifer, and Juanita have already shared, it really comes in us protecting that equity policy. The current policy and the many of the implementation points around special education, around um, IDEA, 504s, ADA, Title II funding are under threat by the current administration. That is a fact, and so the work moving forward and the board will really be to be clear on what our priorities are. If funding is pulled more than it has been, how are we able to allocate other resources to ensure students in Lower Marion have what they need? And how are we able to use the data to disaggregate not only by um, special education status or disability, but also by cofactors that may be compounding the inequities that are transcending our district? And be sure that we're using that data both quantitatively and qualitatively, which are articulated within the policy, to support our students with disability as, as well as those who are historically marginalized, and anyone that is protected under the Fourteenth Amendment. Those rights, as Curry named, are already written into law through these policies. The equity policy further just strengthens how the Lower Marion School District will implement Policy 100, which is our values that were determined in our, in our policy by the school district for what we stand for, all of those which are inclusive of students in disability, with disabilities. Um, but bottom line, ensuring that it stays in place so that our students with special education needs and disabilities are able to maintain, increase the, and increase where needed the level of supports that are inherently they deserve and that they need to be successful.
Thank you. Dina?
Sorry about that. Um, so I think that equity as relates to, you know, people with special um, education needs and disabilities, I, I frame it a little differently because this is my work day to day. I have seen, much to Carrie's point actually, the flourish that you would not expect or you would not necessarily know is there when someone with a disability is given the support that they need, and you can see how much value they bring to the community. So I work with offices of developmental programs to specifically help uh, people with intellectual disabilities and autism, second disorders, get supported employment, get the communication assistance that they need, maybe that they, they need um, help accessing something at their job in order to do well. When you give those supports, you see so much value in what these individuals bring, it's mind-blowing. So I have a, a little girl who um, was non-verbal, and I think her family really didn't have such high expectations, but we held her to a high standard. She got an eye-gaze technology, she is now at an amazing school, she's doing really well, she's in third grade, and the conversations that you can have with her using this technology, it opened up a whole world, and I feel like that really needs to be the key is not, not, you know, saying, well, you can come and sit next to me because I want you to feel included, it's no, I want to talk to you and find out what you have that I don't know I even needed until I talk to you. And I feel like when we bring these individuals into the community and we really focus on them and, and as people and what they can bring, there is so much value there, and that really needs to be, I think, centered in, in equity in the school environment, but really in all things. Um, and I would love to see that any policies that are implemented or subcommittee groups, if we're looking at AI in education, that special ed is, is brought in there.
Thank you. And Jacob?
So I can find my unmute button. Um, yeah, so when we talk about equity, it is essential to me that we don't leave students with disabilities out of the conversation. That has to change. I know from personal experience how isolating it feels when the system doesn't support you. True equity means that students with disabilities are not only given their legally entitled services on time, but also fully included in classrooms, extracurricular activities, and leadership opportunities. Belonging means that schools value students with disabilities as full members of the community. To make that happen, I would push for every equity policy the board adopts to consider students with disabilities explicitly. We should review proposed policies through the lens of accessibility and inclusion, ensure funding is allocated appropriately to special education programs, and implement accountability measures that track outcomes for students with disabilities, not just enrollment numbers. I'd also push for training that connects inclusion to special education. When we make that connection clear, belonging in our schools becomes a natural expectation. If I'm elected, I'll ensure that LMSD truly includes students with disabilities, so every student feels welcomed, valued, and supported every day in every classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we want to be respectful of everyone's evening, even though it's just Monday, um, we are going to ask our candidates to summarize their final thoughts on students with special needs and education at Lower Marion School District, and we're asking you to cut it down to one minute. So if you need a couple seconds to catch up, that's quite all right. Um, and if you're ready, give me a thumbs up, Jennifer. Sound good? Okay, great.
Um, I would like just to first to pause and acknowledge CSC, our community members. Um, like Juanita brought up earlier, uh, community conversations, just great partners throughout our community, and acknowledge the tremendous amount of time and care and collaboration that you put in to, you know, being a voice for special education, our students with disabilities. Um, I shared earlier when I introduced myself that this has a special place in my heart because of the years of work I've seen my mom put in in special education and that bond she created with her students and parents, and to this day, it's just awesome to see them grown up, working, and, you know, out doing their own thing. So I just want to thank you guys so much, and even, um, we didn't get to AI, but even seeing how tools like that are even helping my brother-in-law, who is, been diagnosed with disabilities recently and struggling through college, how even how the school supports him with things like AI, note taker and everything, to see him be able to succeed. So I just want to thank you, what you guys are doing is so encouraging, and I hope to continue to partner with you guys, whether, whether elected or not. Thank you for tonight.
Thank you. Omer?
So I'd like to end this by thanking everyone here. I think it's vitally important that we see fifty caring adults for their children, for their community, uh, for everyone around us, for the school district, coming together and talking about something which is vitally important, which is special education, and then what, what can we all do to make everything better? We all have to acknowledge that it's not a sprint, it's a marathon, and with our children, especially our children specifically, it's a never-ending marathon, and we're continuously striving to, 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 to make things better. Throughout the way, we're gonna hit some new bumps along the way, but that's part of life. Learn how to circumvent those or overcome them as well. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anna?
Thanks. I echo the um, the gratitude that everyone has expressed so far, and really want to thank CSC for your work in bringing this group together and over all of the years in supporting the needs of our students in the district. As I think about the special education community and how to continue to operate as a board member, and hopefully in a second term on the board, I want to continue to collaborate in working with the administration um, in order to hold the administration accountable, but also to really emulate what an IEP team is. It's called an IEP team for a reason, it's us all working in partnerships, student perspective, rental involvement, district perspective, district policies, leading to the best outcomes for our students in alignment with our policies. And I look forward to continuing to learn together to ensure we're able to deliver on that promise and experience for our kids with also not sugarcoating over the negative experiences and challenges that there are, and prioritizing through use of data to make a difference and impact on resolving those. Thank you.
Yeah. Juanita?
Uh, I'm gonna dedicate this last uh, remark to my nephew. Uh, but first I want to thank uh, CSC for hosting this forum. It's been wonderful and very informative and encouraging. So to dedicate this last um, comment to my nephew David Williams, who passed. Um, one of the things that we found out, or I found out later, that he actually, and again, he was autistic and he died, uh, died from complications from lupus. He was self-taught, he taught himself how to be a content creator and had several um, platforms, TikTok, YouTube, Instagram. And he showed the artistic ability that none of us knew. He did it actually quietly, and it was, for me, unfortunately, discovered in the E, ER room. And so I'm dedicating myself and committed to making sure that all students are, have that ability and that policies are in place to express their potential, as David did. Thank you.
Thank you. Talia?
Um, I just want to begin by saying thank you for hosting this forum. Uh, I really love giving the people the opportunity to hear what we all are about and what we have to say and our, our thoughts on everything. Um, I'm a big admirer of the CSC, uh, the guidebook that you guys put out is just absolutely stellar. And so thank you so much for working so hard on all of those things. Um, like I said in the beginning, I'm a mom of three boys, two of them are still in elementary, and I have a long way to go in this district, and I really want to make sure that they and all kids that need support have it and thrive, and I'm dedicated to doing so, whether it's just as a parent advocate or hopefully someone on the board. This is a big, important issue for me, and I will dedicate myself thoroughly to making sure that our special education services are at the best they can possibly be. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob?
Yeah, um, first I want to thank the CSC for inviting me on tonight, and I really just want to thank everyone for being here. Um, it's so important to have informed um, voter base. I'm running for the school board because I was denied a free and appropriate public education, and I want to make sure no student or family has to go through that. I have thirteen years of experience in these schools, and I know what needs to be done to improve them. Let's fix special education, make our schools more accountable to families and students, and end the hate that is flowing through our schools. And remember to vote for me, an independent, on election day. Thank you.
Thank you. Dina?
Um, I really appreciate the time and the energy that the CSC put into hosting this forum. I'm really grateful for uh, the time that they gave me and the education they gave me. I didn't know about the CSS, CSC guidebook until a few weeks ago, and I really feel like I gained so much from this process, and I want to just be really honest and appreciative um, to find out that there were so many great supports available for families. I think that all of us, every candidate from every slate, is really here with the same goal in mind. We want to work together with the administration to provide the best possible supports. Uh, I particularly, this is like, you know, my, my person, my personal passion project. Um, so I really feel very strongly about supporting this community. Um, it's what I do both in my personal and professional life every day, and it means so much to me. And I really appreciate having such great um, supports and such great team members and people who are motivated to come tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. And Carrie?
Thank you. Uh, for me, this is deeply personal. Um, my work and my values are grounded in true inclusion, and when I think about inclusion, it means holding high expectations for every single child. I trust in the more than fifty years of research on that inclusion and the benefits of children with disabilities to really truly have equity, and then the policies and practices are not enough alone if they aren't carried out with a strong belief, a true belief that equity is the way that we move forward for every child's potential. Every single day, as a board member and as a parent, we much commit ourselves to the opportunity to hold the highest expectations for every single one of our kids. It's free of bias, free of low expectations. And when I say this, I'll say it again, I think it's so important that this is not about special needs, this is about human dignity, and let me be clear, when we're talking about a public school, it's about the law in a public school, and this matters. And I am just so grateful for the help and support that I've had as a parent through CSC, and I just want to shout out to Jamie Bassman for helping me through some of that therapy in the past. So thank you, CSC, future, current, and past.
Well, thank you, our school board candidates, thank you everyone for attending. Um, we appreciate you abiding by the two-minute rule and the little dance that some of you may have enjoyed. If anyone has any further questions, you can direct them to our CSC executive board, and we could pass them on, and as I mentioned earlier, this has been recorded, and we will send that out as long, as well as the transcript that's being done by AI. So thank you, everyone, have a wonderful night, enjoy your week, and go out and vote. Thank you.